Valley Center City Council meeting for November 21st, 2023 is now in session. Before I call the roll, I do want for the record to state that Councilmember Colbert is attending this meeting via video, but I just wanted to state it in the record. So go ahead and do roll call.
Mayor Cicero.
Care.
Councilmember Stam.
Present.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Bass.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Kerstetter.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
And Councilmember Colbert.
Do we have, there we are, way back there. I couldn't tell through the crowd. Please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our most kind heavenly father, we are grateful that we can gather here this night. We are grateful that thy blessings are in our community. We pray for the city council that they, as they meet, they will be inspired to do as best for the community and the members of our area. We're very grateful for the unity that we feel and the love that we feel in our, our community. We pray that thy spirit will attend us and bless us as we celebrate this time of Thanksgiving, that we will truly be thankful for all the blessings that we have as a, as a community. We love thee. We're grateful that we have our, our savior to look to at this time, that we will truly find strength in through him. And we pray for these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite.
All righty, before I ask for the approval of the agenda, I do want to acknowledge that we have high school government class students in here observing the meeting. Welcome. Feel free to stick around afterwards and ask us any questions if you wish. Move on to item five, the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion to second. Is there any discussion? Since we have a member on the, on the phone, I'm going to ask to have the roll called for the votes. Sorry, I didn't head you up on that.
Councilmember Stam.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Bass.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory.
Yes.
Councilmember Kerstetter.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Colbert.
Motion carries. Move on to the administrative agenda. Item A, council, city council meeting minutes. Counsel, before we get to that, Mr. Friend would like to speak on that item. Mr. Friend, please, I'm sure you know the rules, but step up, state your name and address.
Evening, Council of John Friend, 3901 Palisverde Circle here in Valley Center. I'm requesting a correction to the November 7th meeting minutes regarding item I of the new agenda, new business item. Last meeting I brought to the council's attention during discussions ordinance 1400-23, two potential violations of state law and one of the Valley Center zoning regulations regarding the actions of the planning board on October 25 approving RC-2023. I won't get into those unless you ask me to, but I think it's important for integrity and transparency in government to include anytime you had violations, potential violations of state law and a violation of the zoning regulations, I'd ask for a dependent outside legal review of these matters. Right now, they're not included in the, in the minutes, and so I'd ask, request they be included in the minutes. I think that would help your consideration that they would be included, these items would be included, the minutes, again, under from last week, last month's meeting.
Thank you.
And these were minutes that I had taken. I would like to reference the League of Kansas Municipalities Regulations. Generally speaking, the records consist of what took place and nothing else. Speeches and discussions should not be recorded. So I do not put in verbatim minutes. I generalize the what has taken place. And the thing that I have to do is the motion, the second, and the vote. So I, I am not putting them in.
And I would like to comment that since we do record this, everything is a, there is a live recording online, and the minutes are just supposed to be just bullet items, and there's really more in these than there are supposed to be, that she normally does. So, counsel, any questions?
Motion to approve the minutes of the November 7th, 2023 regular council meeting as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, Chrissy, go ahead and call the vote.
Councilmember Stam.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Bass.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory.
Yes.
Councilmember Kerstetter.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Colbert.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to presentations and proclamations. We have a presentation from Ruston Lindbeck with SEH, the wastewater treatment plant aeration basin study.
Good evening, mayor and council. I do need to apologize first up. My voice is maybe going to crack and I may need to stop, get a drink of water or a cough drop. Saturday, I could barely talk. My kids had a good laugh at, at all my pain. So as I was doing this, Brent and I have had a lot of conversations as we've tried to set schedule this and get this thing in here. So I just, I wanted to stay on schedule as much as possible. So if you can hear something, please ask me to repeat it or go back. I do apologize upfront. So. Again, my name is Ruston Lindbeck with SEH Engineering. You guys had hired us to come and look at the aeration system of your wastewater treatment plant. It was last year? At least that's kind of when we had started looking into this. I'd worked with Rodney and Wade quite extensively, and then we've had some conversations on and off over the timeframe just going through this. So I just, I'll go through this as quick as possible. Again, sorry for my voice. So. Yeah, and I think you guys are familiar with where the location of the wastewater facility is. The, the aeration base that we're talking in is this circular structure. Again, best I can do going in the middle of the stream. So that is what we are referencing at this time. The existing aeration basin is West Tech Orbital Ditch, which basically has brush aeration rotors or rotors that turn the water to make it move and put DO into the water. The staff, what led to a lot of this, the staff were having maintenance issues with the rotors themselves. It's driven by two motors on either side. There are approximately 50-foot shafts that turn these things. They've been a maintenance issue throughout the years. You guys have done some upgrades to the plant. The original plant was built in 78, 79-ish timeframe. So again, we're just looking for some different opportunities that the staff could do for this facility. So again, the circle in the middle is the aeration basin for the wastewater plant. I think I'm assuming you guys know fairly closely what is going on. You have the pumping station, the headworks, the toxic zone, the aeration basin, and clutter fires afterwards, and then UV disinfection before it goes out of the plant. Basically, we looked at the existing loadings. We went through the current loadings. Your average daily flow is 370,000 gallons at that time. That was through, I believe, 2022 of the DMR data that we had. Here's a couple photos of the existing aeration basin. So you can see that the aeration basin itself had four different channels that were supposed to be able to be isolated to go from one to another if you were ever needing to do maintenance. The picture on the right, you can see that bushing block is between all them four ditches. So multiply that by two, it's on the other side as well. But that was kind of a wear point that Wade was having a lot of issues continually fixing. If you look to the left of that photo, you can see there's a shaft over the water. They actually had removed those brushes and our, that was the inner ditch or inner channel of the ditch that they were, they just took the brushes off. They were still meeting all the nutrient requirements from the F1 quality. So things were working well. Just again, it was the maintenance issues getting out there and dealing with them. Here's some more. So again, in the, I believe it was the 08 case or expansion, there was some retrofits and modifications done. On the right side, you can see there were some channels cut through each of the walls. So this is just one gigantic, gigantic aeration basin at this time. So there's no isolation or ability to do anything. Basically take it down and do anything. The picture on the left is the old belving that was through the bottom. There's mud valves on the bottom of there. So you could actually drain each ditch down. So you could do maintenance on different channels. So moving forward, we looked at projections based on kind of how you guys have been growing and what has been going on in, in your community. You guys are excelling. You're actually doing very aggressive growth. So we went with the 9,500 for 2024, based again on talking with staff. With that, the average dry day went up to 470,000 gallons with that maximum at 700,000. Your existing design data for the plant was that it could do 700,000 gallons on a maximum. Within this, we were looking at alternatives for what we could do. So basically, there's the replace what's there, which is this new West Tech, or was bought by Evoqua, the orbital system. So basically, we would remove what was there, put in with larger rotors, BFD motors. That way, you could have some ability to regulate the flows and DOs within the actual system. Again, looking for some efficiencies and looking for some growth. And keep in mind that the idea of doing this aeration assessment was to look at how could you guys take this thing that's, I know, 40-plus years old and continue to keep it going forward as long as you can. The second option was to do the aeration industries, which is a Triton. So if you look off to the right, this is actually a mixer and a DO incorporator at the same time. So you can actually put air into the ditch and keep mixing. So since you guys are a large bedroom community, which your diurnal curves on your flow to the wastewater plant is extremely variating. So give it like three in the morning, if flows were way down, you could continue to mix and then have your DO actually decrease based on DO probes or RRP probes that whatever were put in the ditch. So again, maximizing the efficiency of the energy that you're using out there, trying to make this thing move forward. The third alternative that we looked at, and this Wade was pretty aggressive by looking at, this is the Landia Air Jet system, which there wasn't a lot of background or R and D put into this system. I did talk to a few facilities in Texas that had done these as auxiliary systems. Basically, it worked well from what they had said to put it in an oxidation ditch that had brushes still running with these as auxiliary aeration. So this would be if your ditch was to fail at some point, you could actually stick these things in there fairly inexpensively, get the thing running and keep it running. So that way, you're not killing any bugs and still meeting your F1 limits. Then we went to option two. We had, again, the alternatives of what you guys started with, but then we discussed the possibility of doing a complete new ditch. That's the Sauvivo Carousel, which again, has the abilities to start off with a new structure and have redundancy. I do have. So here, if you can see this, though, the, the shaft actually spins the water. So it's VFD controlled, but multiple ditches. So that way, you'd have the ability to take one side off or one side could have maintenance done to it. Everything is done from the top side. So you can pull it up through the top of the ditch and not have to actually get in a boat, get out there and do anything. If you did, you would actually be taking the whole ditch offline, shutting it down, excuse me, sorry, to do your maintenance. And again, this is kind of modular where you could actually size this thing to continue building onto it. And then with this system, you would still be utilizing your toxic zone that you guys have already invested into. Typically, these systems have the toxic zone built onto the front side. So that way, you could actually do the DO control through gates. So you're not pumping the water. But again, you guys have invested in the toxic zone you have. So that way, you would stay where they're. So basically, again, looking at these different options, we went through the cost analysis. The Landia Air Jets are actually the cheapest capital cost at this time. There's just as not much research or development behind that to actually let us know what, based on calculations, to see what we could actually do to put those things in there and exclusively run off of just them and not using the brushes to continue with the aeration piece of it. And then you could see, again, the largest cost would be doing a brand-new ditch because again, there's a lot of concrete that goes into that with, with the expansion. So in conclusion, basically, when we went through these things, a lot of this is funding dependent. Where you guys plan on going, I know you're aggressively growing. So there is a lot of options there for you. The new ditch does provide that longer useful life because you have the new concrete and you can go a longer. Using the existing ditch, again, you're kind of limited because you can't take that ditch down or on surface without draining everything and losing all your aeration at that point. Either option that you would use to move forward would allow you the ability to have more energy efficiency and put VFD controls on there with the DO control running the basins. Again, that was pretty quick, but we went through it. So do you guys have any questions at this time?
Councilmember Kerstetter.
Could you go back to your slide 15? On the, could you explain the estimated electrical cost? I know that says annually versus the present worth electrical cost?
I believe when we put that together, it was further projection. So. So. In electrical cost, I believe was based off of what you have currently. Present worth is using the equation to basically over that 20-year life cycle of projection of what that would be.
Okay.
You're putting me on the spot there. I was trying to figure out what the numbers were going to.
Yeah, I just, the, the numbers weren't.
They're a lot larger.
Well, right. It looks like cost effectiveness. One B is probably the better way to go. But that's not a decision.
New one, yes.
What's that?
Oh, going to the new one.
Right.
Because again, the, the nice thing with that aeration industries is the ability to turn off the DO is most expensive piece in your wastewater plant is creating the oxygen.
Right. That's all I got.
Yes. So your option B, those are the most cost effective. Let's not forget what he said. We have a 50-year-old concrete basin. It's never ever been drained, high H2S environment, probably one of the harshest environments you can put concrete in. We don't, we haven't even had the ability to evaluate the condition of the concrete, and we do not have the ability to drain it. So we need to, it's imperative that we keep that in mind when we're trying to decide which direction we go.
Councilmember Anderson.
So looking at this, you have equipment life on each one of those. Obviously, option two is a new system with new infrastructure, concrete. On options one, A through C, you have 20-year equipment life on there. But what, how much longer, and this kind of speaks to what Rodney was just talking about, how much longer can we expect our infrastructure to last with option one through, one A through one C?
So Ruston can agree or disagree with me, but that's the current situation we're in. That's, that's going to be a best guess with that concrete. So when he explained those pillow blocks and with the shafts that we were having trouble with that one section, a large part of that was there was an anchor below that pillow block. So the pillow block was bolted to a metal anchor, which was in turn anchored to the concrete. The part that was anchored to the concrete was pulling itself out of the concrete. The concrete could not hold that part any longer because concrete was basically wasting away. That's our concern. So yes, we're, we're best guess. You got 20 years out of that. You do some new equipment. You got 20 years out of that, and you're, then you're still looking at a brand-new.
Right.
Basin 20 years down the road.
I'm looking at overall juggling the budget for this comparatively because option two is a large sum compared to any of option ones. And I'm looking at bringing on our water treatment plant.
Yes, sir. I understand.
Would in, any of those option ones allow us to isolate and be able to drain individual zones? Okay. That was where I was getting at. Would we be able, because the, the way you explained this, the current system, we cut, we cut through those channels, basically making it one system and not isolated.
From what we understood, that was to increase capacity.
Okay.
So we, we actually did look into the possibility of getting aluminum gates, upward opening gates, where basically we would try to bolt them onto that structure and give the staff the ability to open and close. Ultimately, always leaving them open so you have the aeration basin, but the ability to close them. So you could one of the channels down, but you would have to manually pump from one channel to the other. Because there's, again, there's, I think Ron hinted at that he had seen it empty years and years ago. I don't know when that would have been. But again, you're going to be doing manually pumping staff on site. That time, Ron did indicate that it was in the middle of night and it was shut down for a very short period of time when they were doing this. A lot of what ifs and what how have yous.
We, we are still investigating the Landia Air Jets. We have not quit.
Is that one C?
Yes. So basically, use them as a, as a stopgap or an, or as a helper with the rotors that we currently have. The rotors that are left, I will say, they are still running. We're meeting our permits. We're actually kill them. I mean, we're, we're beating them. We're doing fantastic even without that sections of rotor. But this would allow us, if we could lay those in place, we could drop them down in there in case something went wrong and still operate the plant. That was the, that was the biggest thought process behind those air jets.
Killing our requirements, not the bugs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have?
We'll kill the bad bug.
Currently, this, we have two basins that completes the circle. Is it all one system?
It's currently all one system.
So if something happens to this?
Oh, right on.
Okay.
Yeah, and this, this was all brought on by your staff, trying to do some forward thinking here. Just kidding. How could you do it?
Well, this is definitely not something you want to be reactionary with. It needs to be proactive because.
Again, where you should compliment your staff for actually thinking this forward. Try to think of what can you.
What, what is our, what is our alternative if the system fails today? What happened, what happens to our sewage?
You'd have to throw air in. And I mean, the, the worst case scenario was, would be as if the tank started leaking out sewage, and then you'd have to go through a bypass or we'd have to get KDHE involved. But that's, that's way, way out of the realm. But what, that's why we want to look into like the air jets. So then if the rotors fail, kick up the air jets, we can continue to stir, we can keep the aeration basin running and keep, keep meeting our permanent level.
There's actually a time where Wade had one side go down. Bear in mind, there's two rotor shafts through this, this structure. One of them actually did go down. One did go down based when a motor had failed, if I remember correctly, from when Wade was working. Still able to meet your limits and get things going. Have to be very reactionary.
Okay. Thank you.
And this isn't to, you know, alarm the council, you know, or, I mean, you know, this is just making sure that we're all aware of a situation where we've really upgraded basically everything else in this plant except for this component. And so, you know, this is a part of a plan that, you know, had been reviewed for, for many years. This is just one of the largest costs when it comes to replacement and rehabilitation. And so now it's, it's kind of that time to, to start exploring, figuring out, you know, what-if scenarios, Councilmember Anderson, and making sure that we have everything on hand if we do get into that situation. You know, that's whether purchasing equipment, renting equipment, all those things, making sure that we have a plan of action ready to go. So then we are still meeting our requirements. So do want to make sure that everyone knows where, you know, don't, don't go out and panic, you know, it's not, you know, go run the streets and hair on fire.
What's the timeline? And forgive me if I missed it. What's the timeline on these options to put them into place?
So from my understanding, if we were to build a new ditch, this is why we're still considering like a stopgap fix like the air jets. Because if we were to build a new ditch, you know, by the time we do design, bidding, getting construction started, and then finally completed, you're looking at two to four years to get the redundant ditch built. So we, that's why we're including these other options because we know we may have to have something ready to drop in that ditch even for that timeframe while we're building the new ditch.
What's the timeframe on one, eight through?
Oh, we could do that in three to six months, have those air jets up and running. Yeah, maybe even quicker.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson.
Rodney, if we were able to, to do either option one, A, B, or C, how many of those components could be moved on to option two if we were to have to, to build a new ditch? Can any of those parts be moved over? Okay, I was afraid of that. Other than, other than the aeration, I guess, the Landia?
The jets can be, the jets could be used even in the new, the new basin that is designed isn't designed for those, but there's other parts of the plant that they could be used in.
Okay.
I'm been here, Rodney. I guess for Mr. Wilson, you could actually do another ditch with that same component with the ability to actually isolate each of them channels. Essentially going to more, more channels or maybe even redundancy by doing two ditches.
Okay.
I guess I should, the Auviwo Carousel is not kind of the one, one and only if you're going new.
Correct.
That was just kind of the staff choice. It's the most economical, it's efficient.
I'm just thinking, I mean, if we went with A, B, or C, and those components could be used, say, 10 or 15 years down the road with a new ditch, then maybe that buys us a little bit of time without going straight to the 89, you know, the $8 million brand-new ditch. So.
Bear in mind that there's 20-year.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah.
That's why we, you know, I keep going back to the, the jets because they're versatile. They can mix and they can also insert air. So they can do both. So they can be used in a mix, just a purely mixing environment as well. We're also exploring lease options on those equipment. So depending on what works out financially the best, that's why we got buried.
Councilmember Stam.
On the new ditch, you say our old one, 476,000 to 700,000 max. What would the new ditch be designed for? Same size or bigger?
For this study, it was based on that same flow value. We would have to actually look at what your flows. Because again, you guys are growing pretty quickly. We would want to explore that. So that wasn't even part of this whole aeration study. We threw that in because we felt, I felt, I guess, that we had to look at another option because that was thrown in there to give you guys kind of a global look at what's going on so that you can look at it. I think we'd have to look at those numbers a lot closer and actually try to come up with some kind of either modular design to say that, or with these two, and then maybe go to third, or it would be these two. or would these two, and then maybe go to third, or it would be these two.
Before I get to you, Councilmember Colbert, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Barry. This may be too early in the, in the process, but looking at these options, what's the money situation and, and where, where does this come from? And what is this going to do to our other projects if, if this gets put on the front burner?
So with the wastewater fund, it's isolated by itself. That's all it is. It's only our wastewater funding, our wastewater bills that go out for the money that comes in from that pays for this. Our current debt service situation here, our last major upgrade will pay off in 2028. So that's kind of that point of switch over if we're going to issue some more new debt. So starting in 2028, we work back a couple of years for that construction period to 26, and then 25 would be the decision-making timeframe. So we've got about a year to figure out what we want to do moving forward. And whatever that decision is, it will be completed by 28 when that debt service we, we currently have falls off. And this one will basically replace it and we'll basically stay even moving forward.
So are you saying that the rates would not have to increase to do option two?
I can confirm or deny that right now, but debt service wise, we want to keep it as level as possible.
I, I know I'm not the only one that saw what Wichita was talking about with their water and wastewater rates going up and with us putting in a water treatment plant and then doing something with this. Obviously that has to be taken in consideration, so.
And once you get in the water treatment plant, all that funding, that's completely separate. We are, all of our enterprise funds are completely self-sustaining. So water doesn't support sewer, any longer sewer doesn't support water, neither of them support general fund, general fund doesn't support them. They're all self-supporting.
Is there any way we can look at numbers more to see what that would do to our rates? Is there, is that something that's feasible for you to do at this time?
We will definitely look at that as we move forward to the water treatment plant because we're going to need to do a rate study with that as well. So if we can combine those together at that point, that would give us a great two-year kind of head start on where we would need to be wastewater-wise.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurshtetter.
Land-wise, we have enough land in that current area that we can put. Well, if we do with option 1, A through C, it's going to go in the existing. If we go with option 2, there's enough land in that area that we could do at option 2 to support growth.
Absolutely.
All right. And piggyback off of that, what would we do with the current circle right there?
Probably, I mean, it, it all depends on, you know, once it's emptied, once it's tore down and empty, we'd have to, you know, it depends on KDHE, what you find at that point in time. Now, I would say as long as it's allowable, best case scenario, you would fill it in.
No need for redundancy or use for redundancy?
Not if we're building a new one.
Well, with the new ones, we would have that redundancy, but bear in mind on this photo up here, Mr. Kurshtetter, that actually below that, there's two old clarifiers and some other auxiliary stuff that has. Again, we would have to do sort of borings and figure out.
Okay.
Okay, and council, there is no action on this, so after no more questions? Hmm?
Is it on?
Yeah, on this side, but on this side, right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we are to the public forum. This is the time in the meeting that anybody that would like to speak to an item that's not on the agenda may do so. Seeing none. Have no appointments, so we will move on to old business, item A, ordinance 1399-23 rezoning land southeast of 93rd Street and Meridian.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do apologize in advance that you're stuck with me this evening as Ryan Shreck, our incredible community development director, is attending a ball state game in Indiana. So he's back home enjoying the holidays where, where he is from. So wish him and his family nothing but the best. Here before you is the second reading on the rezoning of the land in between the high school, middle school. This is the ground right north east of where the Recreation and Aquatic Center will be going. This is called Harvest Place. Just to remind you again that, you know, we had the school students join in the fun of naming streets and, and also actually naming the subdivision. So once everything with the plat process gets done, then we will, of course, recognize them since we do have students in the back. You know, we do pride ourselves on including the youth Valley Center in our major decisions, so it's exciting. But here before you is the rezoning of that area. There is a section along Meridian that is going to be zoned commercial and then the rest of it, the residential R2.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 1399-23 with rezones property southeast of the intersection of Meridian Avenue and 93rd Street based on the planning and zoning board findings, the recommendation we adopt them as our findings herein.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Christie, please call the roll.
Councilmember Stan?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurshtetter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Colbert?
Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, ordinance 1400-23 rezoning land southeast of 85th Street and Ridge Road.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Including your packet, here this evening is the, the same staff report and additional information that we've included that you had last time, along with some of the questions somewhat answered that you had. I did want to also address, you know, this ground is located along Ridge Road in between 85th and 77th, along the east side of Ridge Road. A question came up last time when it came to the roads and the right-of-way and the maintenance of them. Did speak with the county and, and no, technically they are not a part of needing to be annexed at this time. Of course, the county and our partnerships, we will continue with those like we have on all of our other projects. So if there is a time where there's annexations occur and what have you, those would come in forms of MOUs or agreements that become for you as well. But the way it sits now and today with island annexation, the county will still continue to maintain the roads adjacent to this island annexation. Did speak with the Public Works Director for Central County, Lynn Packer, and he said that they estimate actually $13,000 to $15,000 for maintenance per lane mile. And so that's how much they actually do when it comes to the maintenance side for the county. And that million dollar figure was for the reconstruction when they're doing a major rehab projects to the county roadway. So did want to make that clarification for you as well. Also including your packets this evening is the potential development plan. Of course, it's conceptual, but did want to show you what the 280 lots of the residential potentially look like, along with the 173 acre area in the middle of it of water, and then also shows the berms along the perimeter as well. Also did want to show you when it comes to potential land values. And so we did a look around the area. Ryan did a great job with looking at other areas that are around similar types of properties during a 10-year period. So these are from kind of 2014 to 2023. And as you see, all the property values have continued to increase. Also do want to remind you, you know, the packet is available on our website, valleycenterks.org. So I'll stand for any questions as we go through this evening.
Councilmember Kurshtetter.
I just want to, you said 13,000 for the maintenance per mile, and that's just one more clarification, that's not, that's for potholes, that's for
Gravel.
gravel, for striping of the lines and for snow removal and everything else. Maintenance, not brand-new construction.
Correct, yeah. Just, yeah, we didn't get line by line item.
Well, I know, I just wanted a general clarification, just so it's said. Thank you.
Anybody else?
They do like mill and overlays and those sets of things. Yeah, that's a completely different budgetary item when you, then you consider the 1, 1 million per lane mile.
Okay, move on to the next phase. So council, as you're aware, we have people here that would like to speak on this item. To set the standards here that for those of you that may not have been at the others, we'll give you three minutes to speak. I am not a knock you down and stop you at three minutes type person, but I ask you don't take too much of the additional time if I allow it. I also would ask if you were here to speak and somebody has spoken previous on what you would like to do, I would ask that you just not repeat it. Any, anything new, anything we want, you want us to tell us, we do want to hear. I'll state that again. I know, I know the feelings behind this. Yes, we know that there's a potential sand pit now. We can actually say that. However, at this point, we're still at the point of just the, the zoning change. So with that said, I am going to start with Deanna Buchell. Please step up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Deanna Buchell, 8020 North 63rd Street West, Valley Center. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here again this evening. I trust this meeting finds you all well. I'm attending again tonight to restate my original objections as a concerned resident in reference to the proposed zoning change. My opposition to the rezoning application I presented during the previous meeting where I articulated several key concerns deserving careful considerations. I appreciate your diligence in addressing these matters and would like to again bring specific points from the staff report to your attention. On item five, the question is, the primary focus of the rezoning request pertains to enabling a mineral extraction operation. I wish to reiterate my concern that this does not sufficiently address any evolving conditions in the area that would justify such a substantial zoning alteration. The residential nature of our community should be a decisive factor in your deliberations. Item 12, the requested A1 designation should not adversely affect surrounding properties. I disagree. However, it is crucial to bear in mind that the existing RR1 designation already permits most of the sought-after rezoning options with the exception of wind energy conver, wind energy conversion and the anticipated raw materials extraction facility. Furthermore, in accordance with the relevant Kansas statutes annotated noted in my letter, I reiterate that you have a duty to reject this proposal. As the governing body, it is your responsibility, according to the Valley Center zoning regulations, Section 17 dot 01 dot 02K, to implement the goals, policy, and proposals of the comprehensive plan for the zoning jurisdiction. Again, given that this land was not included in the comprehensive plan and that the plan has yet to be modified, this council should carefully consider how this ordinance will meet the duties and statutes I have set forth in this letter. A reminder, per KSA 12-57F1, with more than 20% of the owners of record of any real property within the area required to be notified by this act, as per the previous petition, you must have at least a three-quarter vote of all members of the governing body. In conclusion, while I remain open to community development that enhances our neighborhood in the City of Valley Center, I firmly believe that raw material extraction and rock crushing facility does not align with these objectives. The potential negative consequences for residents far outweigh any purported economic benefits. I respectfully urge you to thoroughly consider the information provided and make a decision that prioritizes the well-being of our community. If faced with analogous circumstances in your own neighborhood, I trust that your decision would reflect a commitment to the enhancement of our shared living environment. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next up, I have Jennifer Lee. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Jennifer Lee, 5335 West 80th Street North. It makes me physically ill to have to stand up here yet and speak my opposition to detrimental changes in my neighborhood. A group of people who have no personal interest in it to, excuse me, a group of people who have no personal interest in my and my neighbors' health, safety, and quality of life. A group of people who will not experience their houses being blasted by blowing sand, will not fear the results of their water testing, worried that this will be the time that they find out their water is too dangerous to drink, whose homes will not lose up to 14% of its value through no fault of their own, and then will not battle 36-ton trucks to get out of their driveways and will not be constantly barraged by construction noise. As an educator, I know that if you want to buy, if you want buy-in from your students, you need to provide the why behind your decisions and your actions. Deception always comes back to bite you in the backside. We have been distinctly clear and forthright in our opposition to these changes. And the City of Valley Center, however, has not. What is your why? Why would you completely disregard the wishes of your current citizens and the health and safety of the surrounding citizens? Because even though we have city boundaries, that doesn't mean that people outside of the city are not affected. And there are a lot of people that are going to be affected by this decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Lou.
Yes.
You helped them address, adjust the mic. No, it's not your fault. I'm going to blame it on Mr. Clark. I understand, I'm not either. It's okay.
Gary Lee. Yes, absolutely. I'll put you at the bottom of the list. Is that all right? All right. Oh, boy. Penny, is it Penny? I, yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
I am Penny Simpson. I live at 83, better?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. I live at 8355 North Ridge Road. And mayor and councilmembers. Hope I have my glasses on. I sympathize with the challenges that you are facing. The applications for annexation, rezoning, and impending special use have progressed in rapid-fire succession, leaving little time for assessment of the potential impacts on the community. Historically, Valley Center has taken the necessary time to request independent reviews for projects when it has been warranted. This, these reviews are critical to ensuring that the actions taken align with the best interests of both the city and its residents. Unfortunately, no such inquiry has been initiated. During the November 7th meeting, questions were raised showing the need for better understanding of this matter. These inquiries should have been addressed and understood by all members prior to, to the decision-making process. Given the pivotal nature of these unanswered questions, I request that the second reading of this zoning change be tabled until an independent review can be completed. The City of Valley Center has expressed interest in the possibilities of a residential neighborhood and the water rights that this property holds. These goals are admirable, but they are overshadowed by the lack of analysis. The special use application was discussed on November 7th as well. Part of the application includes homes surrounding the perimeter. However, this proposal assumes the availability of city services. The anticipated tax revenue from this operation is undetermined and would most likely fall short in comparison to the expenses incurred. The desired water rights pose another challenge. Water rights are normally purchased or leased. Financing this endeavor adds to these potential expenses. The proposed sand pit would use these water rights throughout its 30-plus operational years. The owners of the sand mine express an intention to operate a rock crusher on this site. Any material requiring crushing would be brought in from unknown locations. These materials would accumulate on These materials would accumulate on site exposed to the weather until such time it would be worth bringing in the crusher. The crusher would most likely utilize water to suppress the dust created in the process with the wet material falling to the ground. If any of this material was contaminated, these pollutants would then have the opportunity to soak into the soil. These concerns are compounded by the proximity of an open body of water, making the site susceptible to the consequences of stormwater runoff from within the site. Would these water rights be worth pursuing after this potential abuse? This issue has more questions than answers. Request an analysis and base this decision on impartial information that will benefit the City of Valley Center and its residents. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Mona Friend. And I will state it again, please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Mona Friend. I live at 3901 Palos Verde Circle. We're in the city limits, just west of the river. And I wanted to speak tonight because I'm very uncomfortable with the timing and what seems like fast-tracking of this process. From an outside person like me with no experience in local government, it just seems like this whole process is moving way too fast. If the rezoning is approved tonight, we will have been under 60 days from annexation to the special use permit meeting scheduled for next week. In my opinion, that is simply too short of a timeline for a project of this scope. There's a, this is a huge project. I have so many concerns about a sand pit in my area. It would seem to me that a project with the potential to have such a huge negative impact on the quality of life that I and so many of us enjoy would dictate a very lengthy and more important, a very careful due diligence period. Yet, here we are, under 60 days. My question to all of you is, is this an appropriate timeframe? I don't feel it is. To me, the necessary due diligence should include, what are the potential risks to my well water? What's the potential for my property values being lowered? What about the traffic and the noise issues? What's the potential of my tax dollars increasing to maintain roads that have 200 trucks a day running up and down them? These are just a sampling of the many concerns that, in my opinion, should be addressed before you move forward with this rezoning. And I know it's been said that we're supposed to separate the rezoning from the sand pit, but honestly, that just makes no sense to me when the owners have clearly stated on their application, we want the rezoning so we can do a sand pit. So asking us to separate this sand pit issue from the rezoning, that's not reasonable. You know, one of the most important parts of any due diligence process is to properly inform and more importantly, properly educate. And in my opinion, you have not done either. And in all fairness to you, this has been fast-tracked. You haven't really had time, but there's been no information provided to us whose lives you're impacting. Most of the concerns we've expressed have been left unaddressed. I can only speak to myself, but I would guess that others here tonight might agree with me. We're kind of feeling a little bit unheard, and that's not a good feeling. We're feeling like our concerns are not being properly prioritized with you. And most importantly for me, it just feels like this whole process is moving way too fast. I would implore you to slow down, do your homework, and most importantly, communicate with us regarding our concerns. And in the meantime, vote no on this rezoning tonight. At least with the current rezoning, we feel like we have some protection regarding our quality of life issues. But as I understand it, if the proposed zoning is approved, those protections are removed. So that only adds to our concerns. As I said before, I've never had any involvement in local government, so this has all been a learning experience for me. But more than once, there has been a comment made that's been very puzzling to me. It was said in the zoning board meeting, and then again, it was said in this last meeting. In fact, it was mentioned as a reason when the motion was made for the rezoning. The comment was, well, the landowners have asked for this. I absolutely do not understand how that is a reason to approve this zoning while they asked for it. Please do not prioritize a handful of landowners over the hundreds of people that could be negatively impacted by your decision tonight. I respectfully ask you, please do not approve this rezoning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ruth Ann, is it Herman?
I don't think my.
That's okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Frida Clark. Okay, that's great. Is what you're, and I appreciate, and I appreciate both of you that respecting the, if you're hearing what you're, just speaking up, saying that you're agreeing with them, that's, that's fine, so.
Well, I was going to talk about. Say, minor compared.
Okay. Okay. All right. I appreciate it. Chris, I kind of hang, held you back to the, close to the end of this list. Go ahead and state your name and address, as you know how, and you know how it goes.
You bet, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, council members. I'm a bad penny. I show up again, but I really enjoy always being here and getting to talk to you. But my name's Chris Mackelgan. I practice with the law firm McClintock Oskerman, 301 North Main in Wichita. I represent Ms. Bouchelle, the other landowners, and Ike Lawson. And I cannot articulate any better some of the points that your constituents have, have brought up. So I'll refrain from, from doing that. And I did submit to you, and I don't know if you had a chance, a submission, which I thought basically put together kind of this historical development, because I can tell you with the, with the youngsters or the young men and women, I can tell you that I'm going to use this in a land use, as an example, in a land use class that I, that I teach, because it has all kinds of moving parts, and I think it touches on almost anything that can happen with regard to rezoning, annexation. But I want to, I want to, I want to more specifically address the question as to whether or not that you should consider the actual intended use of this property as a sand pit operation, as part of the A1 rezoning. And I, I submit that, and my colleague, Mr. Arbuckle, can weigh in on this, but in my reading of the Golden Decision and your factors in chapter 17, 11 dash dot 10 H, which identifies the factors that you're supposed to, supposed to consider, and in those factors is that the, the reason why the application has been filed and the reason why it has been articulated, operation of sand pit. So I think that under Golden Decision and even under your own ordinances, that there needs to be review of the A1 rezoning request in light of the expressed undisputed intended use. That being, that being the case, I think, again, I believe that a remand to the Planning Commission for further proceedings, further studies is, is appropriate because starts with the Planning Commission, who said, we cannot consider that, and you followed suit. But I think that you're absolutely required. That being the case, I believe also that there is a question on whether or not this conforms with your, with your comprehensive plan, which I know is being reviewed. And I take you back the fact that before the Board of County Commissioners, Mr. Clark explained that, hey, we look at this as residential. Our staff has identified this property as residential, and we're reevaluating, redoing our, our comprehensive plan, and residential is our bread and butter. Then, very non-committal on questions as to whether or not there is a sand pit. So I think we have an admission that ultimately, what's being requested is not consistent with your comprehensive plan. And I bring that your attention, attention tonight. But a couple, and if you'd bear with me, just a couple of other, other question that I have is on the valuations that staff provided tonight. I assume that those are tax appraisal values as opposed to actual comparable sales. And, and I'm not quibbling with that, because that information, you get what you want. But I do all that, for 34, 34 years, I've done all of the real estate tax foreclosure work for Sedgwick County, for your county. And I can, and I can tell you, if it's tax values, that doesn't really have a real world, a real world connection as to what the actual sales data would be, number one. Number two, I can tell from my own familiarity with, with that property, that some of those homes were built after the sand pit was completed and totally exhausted, and it was prime for the residential development that's similar to what the site plan represents. So I don't think that without more, that you can give any credence to, to that information. But more importantly, you've opened the door. Your staff has opened the door, because that isn't, that it would be a consideration as to what is the impact of a sand pit operation on this property. I think that's a proper consideration, but now you don't have, you don't have full input on that. If we're going to, if we've opened the door, we need to send that back to the Planning Commission. So you have, you have a full record. You have a full, full record of what's to be considered. And again, that's what I encourage you to do. There's, one of, one of our folks talked about the speed. There's no reason to hurry this. You've got plenty of time to make the correct decision. I think even Mr. Meyer said that he didn't have a problem with sending, deferring it or sending it back for further consideration. I encourage you to do that. And here's another couple of the reasons, and then I'll, then I'll wrap up. The feedback that I'm getting from comments from some of the council members are consistent with the statement, hey, I can't get by the fact that this is an application by the owner. Well, Golden and your own ordinances do not allow you to give weight to the fact that the applicant is the owner, because you know why? The applicant's always the owner. So if that's an overriding consideration in your mind, you need to abandon that because it's not appropriate. You are not, as you know, and I know Barry's probably advised you, this is not a legislative function. This is, this is different. This is a quasi-judicial function, and you got to follow those standards. So if anyone's sitting there today, I beg you, do not give the, this application greater weight because it's made by the owner, because it's always made by the owner, or an agent of the owner, or somebody that's acting through the owner. You might as well throw out the zoning code if that was the case, because the owner is always the applicant. I can't think of one time in my career it hasn't been. The other, the other comments I heard was, well, I can't get by the fact that I give great weight that the, the site is owned by a Valley Center resident. Again, you're, you're not legislating. This is quasi-judicial. You have to weigh all the facts and circumstances against the standards, and that is not a permissible consideration if, with your quasi-judicial function. You're acting somewhat like a judge, and you're weighing all the facts and circumstances. There's nothing in Golden, the decision, I know you guys have heard that a bunch, the Golden versus Overland Park case, and your zoning code that allows you to say, I can, I can give greater weight to the fact that the applicant's a Valley Center resident and, and those, many who are opposing are not. That's, that's not allowed. That, that's not allowed and would be error. And I know that it's important for you to follow the rules. The last, one of the last comments I've heard back was, well, I really haven't heard from anybody, and I don't put much weight in petitions or submissions or emails. Nobody's called me, or very few, few people call me. I can't call you because you're represented. And that in a quasi-judicial function, that is impermissible ethically for me. But please be in mind is that that's probably the way it should be for everyone, because you're acting as judges, not as legislators, in the same access. But having known that, that that is, for some of us, the preferred way of communication, I will encourage all your citizens to adopt that as their contact, if that is the preferred way. But, but I don't think that now is the time to hold these folks to the fact that they may not have picked up the phone and called you, because this is not a NIMBY defense. This is not, not in my backyard, I don't want a mobile home. Now, there, there's a lot of data that these folks have provided to you, a lot of data. Again, which I think you should have a measured approach. My primary reason, again, why you need to consider the sand pit operation as it were related to the A1 zoning is the fact that it's undisputed. The applicant admits, we are never going to use this property for one of the permitted uses for A1 zoning. We're only using this as a vehicle to get to the special use. Why? Because you can't have special use under the residential. It's not allowed. And so I think that, that, that being the case, you have to evaluate it all, what is the intended use? Since there's no indication, and in fact, I think is expressly indicated otherwise, that this property will ever be used for one of the A1 permitted uses. So with that, I encourage you to do something that I've been involved in, in a zoning dispute. I rep, I've been, was retained by City dot City in a dispute, which cell tower in the middle of downtown. And I'm assuming that you've had some, some of, some of those experiences with cell towers. And, and it required a change in the zoning classification and then would allow a conditional use permit to go forward. Some of the very same arguments were going on, and I recommend it. But wait, do it all as one. Everybody has a voice. You get a complete record. Your staff basically gets to provide, at the Planning Commission level, a holistic and universal consideration of all factors. The public gets its chance to both favor and, and oppose, and you have a complete record, a very in-depth, complete record of what should be done. Then when it comes before you to conduct your quasi-judicial function for your citizens, you are fully and fairly advised, and no one can take issue with it. No one can take issue with it based upon a perceived lack of consideration, a perceived lack of transparency. So I suggest that, that, that is, that, that's what you should do at the very least. And there's no hurry. There's, there's, there's no hurry to rush for judgment. And then at the end of the day, you can stand back, hey, we did our, we, we accommodate everybody. We did, we went to great lengths, given the issues. I didn't favor somebody because they were a landowner. I didn't favor somebody because they were a resident of, of, of our city and others weren't. So hopefully, this might be the last time you hear from me. I don't know what it is, but it's always, I always enjoy coming out and talking to you folks. So, Mr. Mayor, you do a good job. Thank you very much for your kindness.
Thank you, sir. John Friend. Also, again, you know, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening again, John Friend, 3901 Palos Verde Circle, here in Valley Center. Just before I say, I want to make my comments, I want to put out a shout-out to Ryan Track. I really appreciate his customer, good customer service here in providing information that I've requested, at least in a timely, timely manner. So you've got a great employee there. So I just wanted to quickly encourage you to, regarding my information I presented at the last meeting, I want to continue to encourage you to postpone approval of proposed ordinance 1400 dash 23 until resolution of these two outstanding potential violations of state law by the Valley Center Zoning Board, and also violation, violation of the Valley Center zoning regulations. So I encourage you to seek outside, outside legal counsel. And if you want to have credibility in this process, there's got to be integrity. People have got to be able to understand and be confident that you're playing this process, plays by the rules. You'll be much better off down the road as, as this process moves forward. So anyway, that's all my comments, unless there's any questions.
Thank you very much, sir. Gary Lee? I say it to you too, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Gary Lee. I live at 5335 West 80th Street North. And could you, could you go back to, have you? I talked to you last time about my concern for water, water contamination. Very top word there is concept, conceptual. This is a concept. These homes, the 280 homes are based on quarter acre lots. These homes, the 280 homes are based on quarter acre lots. These lots are too small for septic and for well. The only way this can go in is if you provide, the City of Valley Center provides water and sewer. I think the last meeting, it's nine and a half million dollars in today's, today's, today's dollars, right? I have no idea what that's based off on. I don't know if you've contacted all the regulatory agencies to get sewer and water over the river, through private land, through county land, over the, over the dish, and, and to this development here. If that nine and a half million dollars is $30 million, or, I mean, 15, 20 million dollars 30 years from now, and it might be cost prohibitive, then this concept won't happen. There's nothing that's saying the Laker family can sell this to someone, or, or they can, they can build their own, they can have their own private lake, 170 acre, 170 acre lake. This is just a concept. You, you're, you're, you are basing your RR1 to A1 based on a sand pit mining operation. Don't, don't look at this as what you're, what you're voting for. You're, you're, you're looking at a sand pit and mining operation only. If you're going to look at future development, this is a concept only. Like I said, it's based on, the only way this can happen is if you get city sewer and water over there. If it's too expensive, then you're looking at half the homes or less, possibly. If the water is contaminated, gets contaminated, groundwork contaminated, and this development doesn't happen at all, but you're still, I, I think we talked about it last time, if, if, if the water is contaminated, the City of Valley Center would bring water out to, to people west of Valley Center who are on well water. Today's dollars, there's about 120, about 120 homes over, out there that would have to be hooked up to city water. Today's dollars, that's about $38,000 a house, if it's split 50/50. I think you said half would be Valley Center.
We've done that, we've done that in the past, in the, in the one areas that, the areas that have been requested to be put to, yes, we did do that.
Right. If the, if the development went in, and the two, if you add the 280 homes to it, that would be about $13,000, today's dollars. So 30 years from now, you could probably double that. I guess my, my, well, my point is, you've been given a lot of information from people. I, I don't know if you've reviewed it all, if you're taking into consideration what everyone said tonight. I think, and I ask you to table this and send this back to the zoning commission for further review. And please take into concern the City of Valley Center and our, and the residents of Valley Center. That's, that's, that's all I ask.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions from council?
And, and I'm sorry, Councilman Colbert, could you restate, what's your, what was your first, you said something about 10%? I want to be clear on what you're asking. Oh, okay. And so you're referencing to the petition that was filed, that you've received a copy of? Okay. I'll defer to our city attorney, Mr. Arbuckle, to address that question or concern, and then also any others that he may want to address the council with as well.
Okay, before, before you do that.
Do you have another person?
And I can't remember your.
Yep, Phil.
Thank you.
So the applicant, yep. I was gonna say, after the city attorney, I was gonna invite the applicant.
I know, but I just want to let, since we're, we're.
Good evening, Phil Meyer with Baughman Company, agent for the applicant here tonight. Also with me here tonight is Blaine Martin, who is with the Fremar Corporation, Central Sand. Him and I can tag team answers for council. If you have some for us, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna take the technical side of this stuff that deals with the zoning application and the future. Special use permit, if you've got questions for him about his business operation, you're welcome to answer that. He'll be glad to answer any questions like that you may have. I'll be brief tonight. I understand the neighbors' concerns. Heard them before. You've heard a lot that this is going way too fast, and I know why the neighbors feel that way. We started this, first time I sat down with Blaine was in March of this year. So we've been at this for quite a while from our perspective of how long we've been working through this process to put something like this together. And we still got a month and a half, two months to go. We're going to go through in Valley Center, in this room, at least, at a minimum, six public hearings. This is our third one. Tonight, we're talking about zoning. Next set, we'll be talking about special use. I know the neighbors telling you, don't separate them, they need to be together. I'm gonna tell you my opinion, you separate them, because that's what we're supposed to do. But my recommendation to city council is, your attorney sitting there, listen to his advice as to how you should process this case, not ours. And with that, I'll stand for any questions you may have, or I can bring Blaine up if you have specific questions for him.
Do we have any questions?
I'd rather hear Mr. Arbuckle.
So what questions do you specifically have for Mr. Arbuckle, to clear up?
Comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And then let's start with Colbert's question.
Okay, so yeah, start with Ron's.
Okay. Mayor and council, I understand the first question is whether or not there's a valid protest petition filed by the landowners, is that correct, Mr. Colbert? Okay. The protest petitions, if they, if they want to get it to a three force vote of the council, required a 20% of the area that is within 1,000 feet around this basic rectangle. And so the question is, of all the protest petitions we received, valid petitions, did those petitions constitute 20% of that total landmass around that one half mile by mile rectangle? And I've looked at this in detail for quite some time with, with Brent's assistance, and I've concluded that they've come woefully short of that 20%. I calculated, I think in the memo I sent to you, that they needed about 3.7 million square feet of landowners signing that protest. I've gone through figures twice now, and, and my best calculation is, and it's not exactly accurate, because I give them credit for some lots that they probably shouldn't have credit for, and not knowing exactly how these roadways were laid out, I calculate they're probably about, let's say, 2 million square feet at a minimum, what, what they came up with on valid petitions. The problem with petitions is, some of them were not actually signed by all the landowners. And the statute clearly says that it has to be signed by all landowners of record. So in most cases, in a lot of cases, you have property owned in joint tenancy, and that means that both joint tenants have to sign the petition, in my judgment, for it to be valid. Well, in, in a lot of cases, I believe I counted about 15 cases, there were no second or third signatures on those petitions. So I have disregarded those as being within the required 20% amount. And when I've done that, again, I calculate that they came up with, at most, 10 or 12% of, of the 20% landmass. But getting to that, after answering that question, I'd like to kind of put in perspective what, what you're here for tonight, and your decision, basically tonight, you have three decisions. You could decide to move forward on rezoning, you could decide to resign, deny the rezoning, or you could decide, as some have suggested, to send it back to the planning commission with recommendations that, that you may have. So those are your free choices. But your job, as Chris indicated, I do agree with him on one factor, is a job of weighing the various factors that are set out in our ordinance. And those are 17 factors that are to be considered. Those were set up by the Golden decision, it's been discussed, and later decisions came up with other factors to consider. So what you're supposed to do as a council is decide among weighing those factors, do those factors weigh in favor of granting rezoning, or do they weigh against that? And again, you have 17 factors to consider. None of them carry more weight than the others, simply because they're opposing landowners or other factors, or, and they're not all to be considered equally either. There's no statute that says you have to give 20% weight to a landowner's protest and a 10% weight to some other factor. So you decide what factors are critical, and some of them may not even be applicable. I went through the factors that Ryan reported in his staff report, and by my count, and I agree, they could be varied or disputed by other people. My account, there are about 10 factors that support changing this zoning. But that's just my judgment and my, my understanding of, of his report. There are two or three factors that probably aren't even applicable. So, so I, you know, disregard those because they're simply not applicable. And then there were two or three factors that would support a no decision. So that's the way I look at it, and that's the job you have to do as a council, is take a look at these factors and see what you think are applicable, first of all, and what's persuasive, one way or another, on your decision. So that's, that's the job that you have. I've explained why I think the protest is inadequate. I do agree with one thing Chris said, that is that you cannot give undue weight to a Valley Center resident simply because he's a resident. That's clearly an improper consideration. But some of these other factors, like, you know, do the appraisals really represent the valuation? I think they do. We're reappraised in Sedgwick County every few years now, and I have to believe that's fairly close to what the market value of the property is, because it's done so, so frequently. I don't believe, as he said, that you've received any specific data here tonight. I just scientific data that's, that's based upon water contamination issues, traffic counts. I don't think you have any specific data that they presented that would support, you know, these issues that, that they're concerned about. Let me close by saying that what, what you're required to do is you are councilman for the City of Valley Center, Kansas. And it's your job to look out for the citizens of Valley Center and the corporate entity that is Valley Center, Kansas. That is the folks you are primarily concerned with looking out for. And you have heard some of the benefits that may come from this. This, whether it's now or sometime in the future, the possibility of a really nice addition, the possibility of water rights, that would greatly expand our potential for, for using our own water, selling our water to Wichita. These are all things that, that are to benefit the City of Valley Center. And granted, you can't roll over or bulldoze over the concerns of other citizens, but your real jurisdiction, your real concern should be with the corporate limits of, of the folks of Valley Center, Kansas. And I, I think you should make no apology for that. That's what you're here for, that's you're elected to do. And so I think you're upholding your duty by focusing on that and focusing on these factors that, that are critical, that Ryan laid out in his report. And you could discuss those now, or I think what you could do is, if you find this report is correct, and you want to adopt it as you're finding, that would be another way to do it. But it's for your job now to, to deal with these issues and decide which factors you think are critical and, and issue, issue your vote. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Do we have any questions that have led up? Councilmember Kersdatter?
I was about to everybody else.
Oh, well, you guys, did you have questions for?
I'm not sure which.
Okay, Councilmember Bass?
If we pass this rezoning, down the road, if, let's just say hypothetically speaking, the special use permit is not passed, can we on our own behalf, without any landowners, the, the current landowners or applicants, rezone it back to RR1?
Yes, it can be rezoned on application by the applicant.
What I mean is, so the approval of this doesn't mean the approval of the special use permit. And if we don't approve that, we can always come back to the RR1. Through, through separate ordinances, future ordinances.
Yes, and as long as the, you know, landowner requests that change.
They have to request that change.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so it has to be requested, and then, you know, letters go out again, public hearings, ordinances, those types of things. So you just redo that process.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gregory?
Just explain to me what's next, after, after tonight, whether we pass or don't pass? Then it goes to the special use request?
What matters?
Nope, next process.
Well, the next process, Councilman, is that the, there's a hearing before the planning commission in about a week. That is for the public, for the special use permit. And at that time, citizens will be allowed to show up and give input. And if the conclusion to that hearing, Mr. Shreck will make findings and send it forward to the council, saying that we approved this special permit based upon the fact that the A, B, C, and D, or they could say we deny the special use permit. And, you know, it would go back to, to the, to the developer to see if they could come up with other mitigating factors. But it goes back to the planning commission for Ryan and his folks to review the special use process and any mitigation factors that the developers willing to offer up, and the complaints of the citizens that, you know, requesting these factors be addressed.
And then once that process is complete, if it does pass the planning commission, then it comes back before you all, the governing body, I believe, as an ordinance, and it would have two readings, very similar to the rezoning case that you're hearing now. So it'd be another two readings thereafter that.
And then they could start building a sand pit, or what?
Um, no, and so there are state permits that are required, of course, of that operation. I would defer to the applicant for the exact process, but there are state permitting requirements.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure of the timeframe or anything on those for.
Councilmember Kersdatter?
I have a couple of things. So your 17 factors that you referenced are addressed in Mr. Shreck's memo, correct? Okay. Just one, one clarification on that. And then would you address the comprehensive plan that's been brought up in two meetings?
I, I guess my, my response with that would be this, what I presented to the council earlier. As I understand it, we had this property brought into the city zoning authority about four years ago, in 2020, I believe, was added to our area. And my point is that, from my observation, over the last, let's say, four years, or even eight years, if you want to take it out to that, that area has not changed any. So if we were planning for that area, let's say in 2018 or up to 2020, because there's been no change in that area, there'd be no reason to believe that we had, had need to change a comprehensive plan. Nobody was considering putting in a sand pit within the Valley Center, even though we have a river running through the city. It was just something that had never been, you know, presented as a part of the city's issues to deal with. And so that's why, you know, we didn't have it within our plan, and we wouldn't have done anything within that area, because we had no need to affect it, because the area is basically the same. I'm sure you've driven there, and you can see that they're primarily homes on large lots, agricultural fields, and it's that way for probably a mile or so either side of Ridge Road, I would guess.
Thank you for clarification.
Anybody else, Mr. Arbuckle? I do have one. So at our last meeting, we went through the motion based on that petition being valid. Okay, so we, I, that was stated, and now we're found that that petition is not valid.
Are you talking about the protest petition?
Protest petition, right.
Right.
That kind of bothers me, okay? I do know that, I do know that it passed unanimously, so it was, to an extent, irrelevant. But it bothers me that, you know, it bothers me for the fact that the citizens, for, for, let's put it that way, thought that they had this correct. Okay? And because we did accept that, and then treated it that way in the last vote. At least, that's the way I presented it, and expected the results to be that way. Had that not been a unanimous vote, that would have failed, based on what we went through. Okay? Based on all of this, if, had it not been unanimous, had there been, and we needed six, six. So if, if we did not have the six, then that would have failed last week, and we wouldn't be here today. be here today. Because we thought the petition was good or the protest petition was good. Okay. So this is my concern is now we're saying that this protest petition is no good. And in my head, I'm having a hard time reconciling how we should deal with this, even though I know you say we don't have to acknowledge that protest of petition now, but we did in the past. So I, am I making myself clear or am I not? Do I need to try to think this out louder? Do you understand what I'm, I'm saying is, so I have a conundrum right now. That's really what I have is the mayor, it's my job to, to run the meeting and now I have a conundrum and I don't know how to deal with it. So my mind is telling me that even though, that you've determined it wasn't valid, that I should, because we followed it the last time, I should follow it this time. So that's where my head is thinking right now, before I give direction to council on any votes.
My thought on that would be that was simply a first reading. My first look at these petitions was, I think I started late last Thursday afternoon. Brendan and I sat down to go through all of that, to look at signatures and what have you. That was the first time I looked at it. But that, that first vote was just an initial vote. It wasn't the final vote. And it's, it's not the city's job to advise the citizens on, you know, how to draft the content of the petition and what's needed. The statute sets that out. They have counsel and I don't think the citizens want the city attorney or city staff telling them how to prepare petitions. I mean, that's not something I think we should be involved in, but.
You going to comment? Do you have a comment? I, I, again, I don't, I want to hear from Ms. Michelle here. She has her hand up. So go ahead and say what you want. I want to hear what she has to say too.
Right, absolutely. Well, and, you know, legally, you know, the formal petition, you know, process, you know, is a little different than what has, has occurred here. And so, you know, I do want to make sure that's clear as well, that, that we're accepting a petition that may not actually be a certified valid petition. So the last meeting, we went off of just the total sheer number of property owners, you know, around the area, just, you know, counted them up. There was, you know, total of 76 properties or what have you, and then just did the total number. You know, throughout the process, you look at the legality of everything then, right? And you look at, see, okay, legally, what is valid? And so, you know, now we came to the conclusion that, you know, according to the way the state statute's written, that's based upon the land mass and the size of the properties. And so then that's what now the second reading is. And so I don't think that, and that's why there are multiple readings and hearings and ordinances. But I'll defer to Mr. Arbuckle when it comes to the legality of, of the petition as it wasn't really filed correctly in this.
I still have a conundrum, but I do want to hear what Ms. Michelle says. So why don't we let's, let her hear, let's, let me hear what she has to say.
We requested and were given a list from Mr. Schrack of all of the homeowners that were notified within a thousand feet. We went through that list. We went and got signatures. There is nothing in the statute that says all owners. It says owners. It doesn't say if there's 37 owners, we have to go find 37 people to sign for it. That person, just like in any other contract, is a signer for that particular property. We had signatures for 31 owners out of 74, according to this list. And that list was provided by security title. It's not something I came up with. It, and this type of petition was accepted by this, by the county commission. I did exactly the same type of commission. I can, I can provide you copies of them, of the homeowners with their property listed just like this one. And it was accepted by the Sedwick County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. I disagree. I, I call for you to have somebody outside get a legal opinion on this because I believe our, our petition is valid. We had 31% of the homeowners surrounding that property within a thousand feet that signed that petition. And y'all got copies of it. Thank you.
I don't know if Ms. Michelle will concede, but I believe she would concede that by the number 31, she's talking about the number of homeowners in that total area as opposed to the ownership of that property in the area. Again, it doesn't come down to numbers of property owners. It comes down to how much property they own within that thousand feet around the, around the rectangle.
Ms. Friend, you please step up to the podium. And council, I just want to let you know that I know I don't have to let these people continue to talk, but I am not going to not let them talk, just so you know.
And I appreciate that. And I, and I appreciate what you're saying about it was accepted last time. It's a safe assumption on our part, it's going to be accepted this time. And this speaks to what I was saying earlier about a lack of communication on, in this whole process. If you're correct that the, that it does not stand, was anybody notified? Were we given an option or any kind of opportunity to correct?
Not by me.
Exactly. I mean, the, the lack of communication, we could have jumped in, we could have fixed it. We, we weren't given any opportunity, any notification that it wasn't going to stand. You're right. I mean, we're assuming if it stood last time, it's going to stand this time. But to not notify anyone and give us any opportunity to correct, that's exactly what I was talking about when I talked about a lack of communication and a lack of due diligence on some of these issues for us to work together. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kershtetter?
I just have a statement. Based off of the information from last time and now, I say that we, this council member says, believes we should go with the three quarters super majority as we did last time.
Which is what I was going to do. However, I don't know legality, can I authorize that? Or do, I don't know. See, this is where the conundrum runs. That, the reason I brought that, that option, that item up is because my head was saying we should honor what we did last time. Now I'm stuck in, if I do that, am I violating anything? Or do I request a motion to, I mean, that's not, this is, this is where we're stuck. That, that's where I'm stuck.
Well, the, the statute does require with respect to these protest petitions, it does require they be submitted within 14 days of the, of the Planning Commission meeting, I believe, of the decision by the Planning Commission. That would have been up in six, about November 8th, I think. So it was only after November 8th that, you know, amended petitions could have been submitted. Anyway, I have no idea exactly when they were signed, but they're, they're unsigned, most of them, as far as the date. There's just the name of the person on there. Some of them have dates, but most of them, most of them do not. But there was a cutoff of when these petitions could be submitted. And I don't think you can ignore the dictates of the statute on, on whether or not a sufficient timely process has been made. It says 14 days.
Thank, thank, thank. Every single one of them has a date.
So my question again is, I am willing and want to enact that majority like we did the last time. Do I need a council motion? Can we just go with that?
Um, I do want to let council know as well that, you know, there is another opportunity for a petition. We'd be more than happy to, you know, assist them if, if they so request. I've not sat down, you know, with the folks. They have not requested a meeting of myself to understand the process of the petition.
It's not the question.
So.
I have a very simple question. We want, I want to move forward this motion with the same restrictions we placed on the first reading. Legally, can I do that now that we know what we know? If not, is there a way I can get that to legally happen by having a council make a vote on that first? It's set simple.
I would defer to our city attorney, Mr. Arbuckle, in stating the fact of you asking for, you know, a number of votes required when it's not legally required. Because if they did do that and they denied it, the applicant admits.
Well, I, I think if the area is insufficient, which I think it is, I don't think the council will have the authority to override the statute and say it is sufficient.
Councilmember Anderson?
I think the most fair thing to do in this situation, instead of us guessing who's going to vote what, is to table it until they are allowed to correct their petition. So then we know going forward what votes, what percentage of votes we have to have before we vote on the second reading of this. It obviously passed the first reading, so I don't think we need to back up on anything. But I don't, I don't see anything wrong with tabling it until they're allowed to correct with their legal counsel and make sure everything's squared away. Then our next action would be when that, when they're, they're given sufficient time to correct anything. Does that sound like?
It makes sense to me.
And motion?
I'm, I'm just asking the council if that's.
It can be tabled, but.
Not for that purpose. And so I defer to our city attorney, just because there's only certain things that you legally can do now in the second.
Yeah, I, I'd have to research, but the protest period says 14 days and that day has come and passed. And so I don't know if the council, you're basically overriding the dictates of the state statute on, on the protest. I guess the question would be whether or not they can initiate a second protest and have researched that.
Councilmember Kershtetter?
Uh, my question is, can we table this second reading for any reason? Or do we have to reject it?
No, you can table it. We can table it.
What's that?
Just potentially, I just want to make sure and not defer him, uh, just the reason for tabling. I don't know what, what those with, just making sure, you know, with legality side, I don't want to open up any potential lawsuits.
Do we have to give a reason to table it?
I do believe so.
I, I think, yeah, I think so. I guess if, if you need a reason, it would be to research whether or not we can extend the time for them to, you know, amend or file a new protest petition. I have some real problems with that because of what the statute says.
Right. And I understand where you're coming from and I hope you understand where I'm coming from because I know, I'm, I'm, God, I'm going to hate what I'm about to say. I'm looking at this as a politician, okay? Even though I know I didn't win the mayorship, it's our job to also represent the citizens, even though these people are not citizens of Valley Center. I know this governing body, well, not all of them. Let me, I want to retract that there are some. I know this governing body is listening to all of these people and taking this all into consideration. And guys, correct me if I'm wrong in this, but I don't think I am. And again, the conundrum I have is we requested, we are, I, as the mayor, allowed that ordinance to move forward based on a petition that I have now found is not valid. I don't think it's fair to those people that we followed those rules previously and are not going to now. And again, I don't know how to deal with it. So my suggestion, council, is that we table this in the, in an effort to determine the legality of what we're about to do based on what we've done. And, and if that means hiring a third party or going to the attorney general, that's what I want to see happen. Okay? I do not want to move this forward to, that it, in my mind, is going to make me feel like I've done the wrong thing.
But we always have two readings of an ordinance.
I realize that.
I don't, I don't think the protest petition had anything to do with the passage of the, of the initial.
Well, it did because I stated the fact that it must be a, a super majority. It's in the record of that, with that statement that I made, that we must have a super majority because of that petition.
Certainly that was, that was a statement, though, Mayor. So I just want to make sure that you're clear on that. So, you know, without having a vote, now if you had a vote and then, you know, and then that's an issue of, you know, the number of votes cast, then, then you can challenge that. But, so I just not, not try to care one way or another, just making sure that you understand what's going on.
Councilmember Colbert, I know we've kind of ignored you over there. Any comments from you, sir?
Yeah, I, I'm, I, I agree. That's, again, that is my conundrum right now.
Okay. Councilmember Anderson?
Mr. Arbuckle, would we be able to allow them to submit a second petition? I'm sorry, yes, petition of opposition?
Again, that's a question I haven't researched as I indicated earlier. I have some question about that because, you know, the state law says it's 14 days from the date of the, the recommendation for rezoning by the Planning Commission. And I, I could look and see if there's authority to extend that in contradiction with the statute says. I just don't know.
Who, I see an arm up back there. Come on, I know you passed earlier, so I'm going to let you come up and just, because you didn't speak earlier, just take your name and address for the record.
I'm Ruth Ann Herman and I live at 8325 North Ridge Road. And I just wanted some clarification. There were 74 property owners, is that correct? 76. And 31 of the 76 signed the petition? 24 of the 76.
Yeah.
And so what percentage is that? That's a third?
Thirty, no.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we're going to go, according to you, it's, has to do with land mass. So if you own more land, your vote counts for more? So that's the golden rule? Whoever has the gold makes the rules? That's crap. That's all I'm going to say.
All right. Councilmember Anderson, did you have something?
Yeah. My original feeling on this item hasn't changed. I still feel that we need, eventually, I, I would vote to pass the rezoning because I want to hear the special use permit application and all the information involved in that. However, in light of what we have going on tonight and not knowing going forward, I move that we table this item.
For what purpose? You have to state the purpose, I do believe. Councilmember.
Until we get a clarification.
Clarification on what?
On the, two, the, the two items. One, whether what we did, accepting the petition in the first reading and not accepting it now, would, if that was legal. And two, if they can refile, if, if we can grant them the right to refile the petition according to law.
What he said is, what is my recommendation, my motion. For, for tabling this.
For, for tabling this, for those two reasons.
And Councilmember Colbert, I did hear you second that, but did you hear the reasonings? And do you agree with that? Okay.
Want to say something?
Yes, now, for discussion purposes, um, do want to state, though, that, uh, there is an opportunity to file another petition for the special use. Uh, so they do have another opportunity for that. Secondly, it's only based upon after you vote. And so the number of total votes is when, what issue you have, um, before you mayor and the conundrum that you're having is just based up after you vote and how many say yes and how many say no. That's the only thing that, that, that you're, that you're debating with yourselves. And so you're not technically debating with yourselves on, you know, did you approve the petition? Because there is no approval process of the petition. It's just a matter of fact of, does the petition grant, uh, the 20% of the total land mass? And so I just want to make sure that's clear, uh, for all of you.
I, I'm clear on that point, and I, and I still think that, that that's giving us two answers. There's, there's, that's giving us two answers before we've had a chance to vote. And, and going forward, that can, that can determine how somebody votes up here, and if we're split in that middle, then, then what do we do? This gets hung up in, in-
Well, then-
In a court-
Fired, yeah.
At some point, because I can guarantee that's going to get filed. I would rather us pause and get this clarified before we move forward, based on the motion that I made.
Councilmember Kerstetter?
Never mind.
Okay. So I have a motion, a second on the floor. Gee, I hope you got that down enough to, you can get the rest of it.
She's going to check it on YouTube.
That's, I, I'm, I'm going to go check it on YouTube. Um, so I have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, raise your hands. The table, all in favor, raise your-
Wait a minute, we've been doing, we've been doing the vote through voice.
Oh, yeah, I forgot. I'm sorry. Thank you, guys. It's getting long. Councilmember Colbert, I'm sorry, that's on me.
Christie, before we vote, could, is there any other discussion from anyone up here? Any thoughts on what motion was made?
Councilmember Stam?
How long will this take to research? A week, couple weeks, a month?
Yeah, it's a couple weeks.
Do you probably have it done by next meeting?
Yeah, I hope so.
All righty, anybody else? Christie, call the roll.
Councilmember Stam?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerstetter?
No.
Councilmember Wilson?
No.
Councilmember Colbert?
Motion carries, six, two. Thank you. Thank you, guys, all for coming again. I appreciate it very much. Do we need a five-minute break?
No, let's just keep going, get done.
I'm not asking you.
Oh, I'm fine. Oh, sorry.
All right. Moving on to new business item A, Dar Rees Across America. Uh, come on up, state your name and address. I, I know you've been sitting here a while, so if you didn't want to get up, I would have been okay with that, too, so.
I was going to say, are we ready for something else? Pam Brillhart from the Little Arkansas Chapter DAR, Daughters of American Revolution. I'm here to talk to you about the Rees Across America that's coming up, uh, December 16th.
I can barely hear her.
Thank you for your past donations and support. Uh, we are again asking to use the Valley Center Cemetery for-
Hold on for one second. Can you guys be quiet back there, please?
Just, yeah, they're old.
Is there anything going on?
They're old.
Sorry.
Got to give, got to get some consideration here.
Am I okay now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Um, we are asking again for the opportunity to use the Valley Center Cemetery for the Rees Across America, and, uh, it will be held at 10:00 AM on the 16th. It will coincide with the Arlington National Cemetery Rees Across America Ceremony, where they lay wreaths on the veterans, and we do lay a wreath on every veteran in the Valley Center Cemetery, as well as many as we can in the Sunnydale, Kechai, Pleasant Valley at Bentley, and at May's Cemeteries. Um, we've done this now, this is our sixth year. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity to do that for our veterans. We have help from the Boy Scouts and some Girl Scouts, the American Legion, as well as some of our veterans. If it's not too cold, some of the oldest veterans in Valley Center come out and help us. We've appreciated your donations in the past and hope that we could have a donation this year to fund the wreaths and be able to put out as many wreaths as we can.
Thank you.
And if I can just say one thing, Lou, I am so sorry you won't be mayor next year. We've appreciated your help so much and appreciated you being at our ceremonies, and we'll miss you.
Thank you very much, and, and just make sure the weather is nice this year, because if I remember right, the last couple of years were not very pleasant. It was like nice prior to that, but it was bad those days, so.
Oh, freezing cold. Thank you so much.
All right. Councilmember Kerstetter? I know I think what you're going to ask.
Oh, yeah, I got a couple things to ask. Mr. Smith, uh, how much do we have budgeted for this? Don't go far, I have a question for you, too.
No, she won't go far.
Had anything specifically, but we have given three to 400 in the past for this.
I'm, so this is in a particular line item? Do we have, if we gave the amount previously, would we-
We could definitely afford 400 if you want to do 400.
Okay, perfect. Uh, next question is for, I totally don't remember your name, I'm sorry.
Pam Brillhart?
Um, the, the donation, does that, the prime, primarily stays in Valley Center?
It goes to buy the wreaths.
It goes to buy the wreaths for the Valley Center?
Yes.
Or Sedgewood County, basically?
Here in Sunnydale?
Okay.
Yes.
I was just curious where, where the money goes, but-
Yeah.
Councilmember Evans?
I just wanted to clarify, Pam, that you said the ceremony is at 10:00 AM? Is it at 10 or 11s? And here it shows 11?
10:00 AM here. Uh, the one at the National Cemetery is at 11, but we're an hour behind, so.
Okay, I missed, I misunderstood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Motion to approve donation to the DAR for the Rees Across America program in the amount of $400 and allow a ceremony to be held on December 16th at 10:00 AM.
Second. I have a motion, a second, and I need to add that to my calendar right now before I forget. Um, is there any further discussion? Roll, no, got to vote with roll. Christie, call the roll. I, I want to also say something, guys. You noticed I've always said Christie, call the roll. We've discussed this, and, and Madam Clerk was not something she would want me to call her, which is why I use her first name, just so you know. I, I wanted to make that for the record, because we've done this before, and, and, because I technically should be calling her Madam Clerk, so, go ahead.
Councilmember Stam?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerstetter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Colbert?
Motion carries, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the From the Ground Up discussion, I believe.
Oh, yes. Oh, there she is.
I think Sarah left and then she came back, and she has a, a new companion here with her, so, um, so this, uh, Robin Scriven, uh, joined us last meeting, and, uh, then we have Sarah, who's the director, and I will let her introduce herself.
Thank you, yes, I was here and I came back. I went to the buy auction and don't feel like I missed anything.
Did you bring us any pie back?
I didn't.
All right, all right, all right, because we missed it this year, because they scheduled it at a council meeting, so.
How rude, they should really call you guys next time.
Yeah, and, and we've given the board member here a little bit of a hard time about that, so.
Uh, yes, so I am the president of From the Ground Up, um, and kind of like our letter says, you know, we, um, run the back-to-school fair in August, um, and then last year we had, uh, 400 and 60 kids that we helped, and so we give away free school supplies and haircuts, um, clothing through our clothing closet, um, and just various things. The police department comes and hangs out with us, it's always a good time. And then our biggest project right now is the Hornet Holidays Christmas Program. So we take kids in the district to camp for gifts, match them up with people who are willing to buy them. Um, and so this year, we, Robin was pretty close. So we have, um, 244 kids that we're helping, which last year we had 185, so we are up a significant amount, um, and it's about 83 families. So we typically spend anywhere from $16,000 to $20,000 just to fund the Hornet Holidays program, so, yes.
And staff, as you remember correctly, we did ask you, they understood that this wasn't a budgeted item, and we asked that you go back to see if we, what we could, uh, do for this year and potentially next year. I knew you were going to ask that, so I saved you the question.
Appreciate it. There you go. Uh, and speaking with our incredible finance director and assistant, Mr. Smith, uh, we feel that $500 could be, uh, budgeted, uh, and found for this year, and then-
Okay. Counsel, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve donation from the Ground Up program in the amount of $100.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Christie? I know, I'm not used to it either, okay?
First time for everything. Councilmember Stam?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerstetter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Colbert?
Motion carries, thank you very much.
Oh, Clint? I'm sorry.
I would like to see if we can actually do more than that next year, if that's possible.
So the other, the biggest need that we have right now, too, is, uh, we need volunteers. So if you guys want to come volunteer with us on December 9th, I believe, um, you sent out the-
Was, was that the email you sent out? Yeah, okay.
So the families can come pick up their gifts, um, we have volunteers that are there to wrap them, they can stuff stockings. They know you're going to get saronated.
That's okay.
But it's really fun, um, everybody loves it.
That way everybody on TV can hear you.
So, yes, if you want to come, come join us and see where your money's going, uh, we would love to have you. It's at the intermediate school, and, yeah, you can see, see his email for more information.
Sarah, thank you for all your work. I know you, this is one of your projects that you've taken on, and, um, our community really appreciates you.
It's a, it's a good time, and it's an interesting story of how it all started, but we have a really good team, so we're, we're glad to, to be in a community that supports us, and I know there's a lot of divide right now, um, but we posted our wish list on Facebook last week, um, and there hasn't been a day that I haven't had more than, or less than 10 packages show up on my front porch with just things that people are buying off of our wish list, um, and it just, it blows me away, it's really cool to see, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Moving on to item C, wastewater treatment pla- excuse me, irrigation basin study.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Yes, uh, Mr. Lingback came up here and gave that excellent presentation, uh, on the actual technical memo. Uh, in your package, we have the actual technical memo for you. We would be happy to stand for some questions, uh-
Hold that screen a minute. Go ahead, finish your statement, back up.
Before, we would ask, uh, recommend you to-
The mo- table and hold moment. So is, is this a picture before those cutouts were made? Is that what, is this, is that the same thing you showed?
On the other side.
On the side.
Ah, yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, you, your cutouts are on the other side.
Okay, I was just curious.
Through the middle of that.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Kerstetter?
Why was this two separate items, as far as presentation, and then this procedurally? Is there any reason, or?
Well, there must be, because-
Oh, it ain't perfect.
With the old business that I knew would be very lengthy, and I didn't know whether our presenter would want to stay till nine o'clock, we put the presentation before the old business-
Perfect.
And then the new business. So there was a reason.
No, no, the perfect, I, it's kind of what I was wondering, but I wanted, um, was curious.
So, obviously, we, we're here only motion to receive and file, right? So we don't have to take any action. Um, I, I, I didn't comment earlier, I will now. Um, and the only reason I'm thinking of this is because when, when Mr. Clark and I go to the elementary schools and talk about government, sewer seems to be the biggest thing he likes to talk about. And, and I can't wait to hear him say, "Guess what? We're going to be having more space for your poop."
Here's our poops.
So, all right, anyhow, is there a motion? If everybody's done, that is.
Who to receive and file?
Second.
I have a motion to receive and file the report. Christie, please call the roll.
Councilmember Stam?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerstetter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Colbert? Thank you.
Councilmember Evans?
I just wanted to ask a quick question about this, is, is it's too late?
It, not really, because we didn't motion on it, it was just a receive and file.
So I just want to ask the question, is there funding out there to start looking at for this? Because we talked about the future, now's the time to start looking for that, that money.
No, I'm sure there is, yes. We've, we've had some of these conversations, and I'm sure there is funding to hunt for, yes.
Okay.
And-
Thank you.
Your staff is great at finding it.
I know, they're very creative.
All righty. Moving on to the consent agenda, don't sit down.
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. Christie, please call the roll. It was Wilson and, um-
Evans.
Evans.
Councilmember Stam? Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerstetter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Colbert?
Thank you, counsel. Uh, we're going to go ahead and move on to staff reports, we're jumping right down to Chief Newman.
I know it's late, I'll try to be quick. Uh, Sarah already covered one thing, I did send out that email, it's December 9th. I think they've got the morning covered, so you can sleep in and still volunteer, because they really need help between 11 and 2. Uh, the second thing would be the, I just wanted to give you an update on our flock camera on Ford Street. It's been installed for some time, we've had, uh, we've had multiple hits from it. Uh, perhaps one of the biggest was last night, had a stolen truck from Wichita. Uh, the person driving the truck was not from Valley Center, he was from Wichita as well, so I don't know what he was doing here, but, uh, we ended up in a pursuit, which ended up in Butler County on the dirt roads, muddy roads. Uh, ultimately, he was caught, truck was recovered, uh, all ended well, so, just wanted to give council an update.
All the way over to Butler County, huh?
All the way over to Butler County.
Wow, okay.
Took a while.
Mr. Eglston?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Hmm, no engineers today. Well, that would be normally called on at this point. No offense. Mr. Arbuckle? Mr. Smith?
Nothing else.
Great, I don't think we have much else, then. Uh, oh, Mr. Clark?
You know, I wasn't going to say anything, but, somebody had to text me and say, "Reminder, hometown Christmas is happening."
December 1st.
December 1st and December 2nd, uh, and so, of course, the tree lighting on December 1st. Uh, Neil's crew, uh, went, uh, this weekend, or, wow, uh, it's been a long month. Um, Neil's crew went on Monday, yesterday, uh, picked up the tree, and so it is actually, uh, getting its lights strung on it and everything right now, uh, so this week, and they will hopefully be put up. Uh, we are kind of setting up a little different this year, instead of the T-posts, we're
actually doing something a little bit more permanent in that area and do some eye hooks. Last year, you know, had a strong wind, you know, kind of, maybe blew it over. And so we're making sure it's a little bit more secure moving forward, since this seems to be the kind of the permanent location. And so if you are out and about tomorrow, you might just happen to see the tree getting placed. Of course, we'll post pictures and all those fun things. I'll stand and pretty questions.
Thank you, sir, I don't see any. Okay, we'll move on to governing party, governing body reports. I have nothing. Councilmember Stam?
Nothing.
Councilmember Evans?
I'm good, sir.
Councilmember Bass?
Nothing for me.
Councilmember Anderson?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Gregory?
Just a thank you to Mr. Clark for handling the SCAC meeting Saturday.